You can go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for our February 1st regular Borough Council meeting. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 P.L. 1975, notice of this meeting was posted on the Borough of Penns Grove Municipal Bulletin Board designed for that purpose. Notice was also posted on the Borough of Penns Grove website at www.pensgrove-nj.org and was emailed to the official newspaper as provided by resolution. Additionally, in response to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, this February 1st, 2022 meeting is being held via Zoom online meeting platform. Everyone, I'd like you to place your right hand over your heart and let's say the pledge together. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States-
The United States of America.
And to the republic-
To the republic.
One nation-
One nation.
Under God-
Under God.
In the visible- With liberty-
Liberty and justice for all. For all.
I think it looked like Mr. Brown was holding up a flag or was that Rich holding up a flag? I can't tell, but whoever it was, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, can you do invocation, please?
Yes, let us bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Father God, and your many blessings. We thank you for looking out over us during this last storm and keeping us all safe, Father God, keeping us safe from COVID. And Father God, we just thank you for your grace, your strength, your mercy, and your love. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Here.
Council President Martin?
Here.
Councilwoman Mincy? Councilwoman Mincy? Let me check the waiting room. Maybe she's muted. Oh, okay. Here she comes. Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Yeah, separate the devices from each other.
I am, yeah.
Councilman Rambo?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Here.
Councilwoman Worley?
Here.
We have a quorum, all present.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business is the minutes. Um, we have the January 4th, 2022 regular session minutes.
I move to adopt the resolution. I mean, other minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Motion to adopt by Councilwoman, Council President Martin, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item is January 18th, 2022 regular session minutes. May I have a motion to adopt those minutes, please?
Second.
Did you, Madam Clerk, did you catch who made the motion?
No, I didn't.
Uh, who made the motion?
I motioned, I just heard some static. Clearly, but I motioned, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. And I believe the second was made by Councilwoman Worley.
That's correct.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the payment of bills and approval of bill list. May I have a motion to adopt, please?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Council President Martin, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Worley. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, next item on the agenda, introductions of resolutions for consideration by consent. We have resolutions for consideration by consent, and before we move into this, I want to note something for both the council and the public. You will see that our agenda for today is somewhat light. Starting in February, our next meeting will be a work session. At that meeting, the council will be able to publicly discuss matters that we are working on. And following that meeting, the matters that we have discussed will appear on the upcoming agenda. This way, U.S. taxpayers of Penns Grove will get the opportunity to hear the discussions that go into the resolutions and ordinances that we pass. We, as a governing body, are changing the way that we do things so that we can be more transparent to the public and we can be more efficient for getting the business of the residents done. All right, first resolution, 2022 dash 2 dash 32. That is a resolution appointing Commissioner to the Penns Grove Sewage Authority, which is Michael Worley.
Can we do these separately, point of order?
Yes, we can. So we'll start with this resolution. Go ahead, motion to bring on a discussion, anyone want to discuss?
Oh, no, it's actually a motion to adopt, and then you can-
Okay, okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Carter, may I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Rambo. Madam Clerk, can you do-
Actually, ask if there's discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any discussion?
For, this is for Mr. Michael Worle?
Yes. Yes.
I don't have any information about Mr. Michael Worle. Is there anything that we can possibly table this so I can get more information on him?
Um, sure, if someone would like to make a motion to table. I mean, they're supposed to table. Okay, Councilwoman Mincy made the motion, is there a second?
Second, if I can.
Okay, Councilwoman Worley made the second. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call?
Yes, Councilman Carter?
This is, just to be clear, you have to be clear for your record, this is a motion to table, which means a motion to put it off to a certain date. Uh, you probably should set the date that you're talking about, is it the next meeting or?
Is this, is, do you want to, this, I guess this will be for the next meeting, right, Councilwoman Worley?
Yes, ma'am, if we could do that, yes, ma'am, appreciate it.
So it's a motion to determine if it's to be tabled, go ahead.
Thank you.
I have a question, when is there, when is there a reorg meeting?
Um, next week is their meeting, I believe.
Derek, I met with the director last week, Derek, reorg is, um, I think it's the 7th, it's next week, so this is time sensitive because you want them to be able to do reorg with the full board.
It's the 17th.
That's in two weeks.
That still falls before your next meeting.
Right.
I believe. I don't know.
Our next meeting is on the 15th, I believe.
Yeah. Okay.
There's a motion on the floor.
So Madam Clerk has to do roll call, right?
Are we, are we in discussion or are we in vote?
Well, we're making a motion to table it.
I'm sorry, can you hold this one moment? Someone named iPad just made that statement, can we find out who that is because that's someone-
No, that was me, I was, I don't know, are we discussing tabling or are we discuss, or are we voting?
We're discussing tabling, but we need to be clear as, because someone named iPad just spoke just now.
I think that was me, actually.
Are you on in two devices?
No.
So you, you had your discussion, and now is your vote to determine whether or not you want to table the matter.
That's what I'm asking, are we discussing tabling or are we voting? Where, where are we?
Discussing tabling at this point, this is voting to determine whether or not it will be tabled. I assume the discussion has already occurred unless someone else has something else to say regarding the discussion.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Their, their meeting is, is when exactly again? The Sewage Authority meeting, when is the next meeting for them, Sean, you said?
Uh, my understanding was that it was next week, the week of the 7th, February 7th. I'm on our website now, they don't have it updated with their dates.
May, may I speak?
No.
What's that? He wants to tell us the date.
I didn't hear you, Carol, what did you say? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Mincy.
I said, who was that, ask could they speak?
I don't know.
Mary Kay James, I know the date of the meeting.
Right, so if, if they, if the, just so that we're clear, no one has the option to just speak from the, from the floor unless they're recognized by the mayor, so mayor, you can recognize who you'd like.
Okay, so are we, we're in the, so we're in, so Mary Kay just said it's the 17th, Sean said it's the 17th. So right now, we're in the middle of a vote to table it, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call?
Councilman Carter?
I'm gonna have to say no.
Council President Martin?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo? Councilman Rambo?
I don't know if he's on anymore, I don't see his name. Yeah, his name's not on here.
He might have got kicked out by accident.
Somebody put in the chat that he left the call, he probably, I know if he only be, maybe having internet issues there.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
F.
I'm sorry, you had to, I can believe she's going abstaining with the law to this.
If anybody has a question about my vote, to say yes, they can look at New Jersey Administrative Code 535 dash 1.4 and submit a question to the local Finance Ethics Board. But I'm voting yes.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
We have three yeses, one abstention, and one net. Motion passes.
So it's tabled until the next meeting, which is the, what date was that?
Next meeting is February 15th.
Is it, can I ask you a question, Mayor?
Yes.
At this hour, would I be able to contact you to get further information about Mr. Worle?
Yes, I, I would really appreciate that if, if you've got contacting me, I would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, actually, though, Councilwoman Worley, I can actually forward you his resume, too.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate that.
I'll forward it to everyone.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I do need to put something on the record, just so that we're clear. Uh, I did advise two members of your council whose spouses are members of the, um, Sewage Authority, uh, that I believe that their vote, uh, on this would be in conflict, uh, so I advised them that I believe they should abstain with this matter. Um, and just so it's clear, that advice was given prior to this meeting, I understand that it was disregarded, but it needs to be very clear for the record.
And I thank you for your advice, Mr. Tarver.
Okay. Next resolution is 2022 dash 2 dash 33, and that is an emergency temporary budget resolution. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Worley, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mark, Council President Martin. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
I didn't see, um, Councilman Rambo, but I'll call this in case, may I not am in?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, mission passes.
Thank you. Next resolution is 2022 dash 2 dash 35, that is a resolution authorizing, oh, I skipped one, 2022 dash 2 dash 34, that's a resolution authorizing signatures on the Borough of Penns Grove checks. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Worley, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mincy. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
I just had a comment on this. Um, I think that it would be helpful if each department got their budget and the checks that are being drawn on their budget. So kind of we know where we stand while we're making decisions on how to allocate money.
I don't think that's what this is. Okay, you noted, you got that, Mr. Brown?
Do the, do the, do you have anything to do with each other? Or she, or she thinking, because I did hear, uh, Councilwoman Mincy say she don't think they have anything to do with this. Does that, does that have anything to do with this, or is she thinking of something different? Just for comparison.
Actually, is where, we should know what our balance is in our budget, like the Rec Committee, and then you'll know, when you see the bills come through, you'll know what is being drawn off that account. And this is authorizing people to sign the checks. I'm just asking that we get kind of a report saying, okay, I have a $10,000 budget, we've spent $500. It's not exactly related to this, but I think it would be a good thing for us to have.
And, and let me just add that, feel free to, if anytime you want to check your balance or anything like that, you can definitely just let the BA know and he can get that information for you at any time.
Yeah, I think it should be like a regular thing. Once a month, once a quarter, or something like that.
How often, like you want it to be like weekly or monthly, maybe monthly?
Monthly sounds good.
Okay. All right.
So we're voting now, right? It wasn't a second?
Yes.
Wait, can I, I'm sorry, can I just get clarity on, on what we just, on what we just discussed? I know we were voting on the signature, so are we now voting to have everyone, each committee? I, I, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry.
No, we, we were voting on the resolution, but Councilwoman Scarpese, um, commented that even though it was a separate item, she thought of, just happened to think of it, and she was requesting that, um, the committees get like a monthly update as to what's in their budget. But the two are separate, they don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, that's, okay, I, I can vote, I just wasn't sure.
Okay.
Sorry, Charlene. It's something that I thought of when I saw this resolution.
Yeah, I, before I voted, I just needed to make sure I knew what I was voting on, that, that's, I just have a question. We can proceed.
Okay. So we have, who made the motion?
Councilwoman Worley, seconded by Councilwoman Mincy.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, mission passes.
Thank you. Okay, next resolution is 2022 dash 2 dash 35. That's a resolution authorizing refund duplicate payment to CoreLogic. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Worley, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council President Martin. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Council President Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mincy?
Yes.
Councilman Rambo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Worley?
Yes.
All affirm, mission passes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is, can you scroll down a little bit, Madam Clerk?
I apologize.
That's okay. Back up a little.
Oh, keep going.
Okay, there we go, okay. Oh, go down a little, sorry. Okay, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. I'm sorry, Worley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hope everybody's doing well thus far. Um, today, I just want to talk a little, a little bit about our fire code violations. Um, I believe everybody got a copy of my, um, committee minutes, which you can just follow along with me. Um, this is mainly for, you know, the public as well, but, um, and hopefully, Sean, you can help me out with this. Um, is it true that for every violation, there is a $5,000 fee or charge? Is that true? Sean?
Um, give me, just give me one moment.
Okay.
I have everything right here in front of me, just give me one moment.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, showtime, suit up, vests and helmets.
Madam Clerk, is what?
I'm sorry.
Hold on, you guys, Madam Clerk, can you mute Isaiah Morris?
Okay, let me find him.
While Sean is doing that, I'm just gonna go ahead and go a little step further, okay?
Okay.
Um, I, I spoke to, well, first of all, let me just make my committee who came on. Um, Irene Scarp, Councilwoman Irene Scarpese, Council President Charlene Martin, um, also our engineer, Sean Smith, and Ms. Carolyn from Triad. Thank you, guys, for attending. Um, I know there are, oh, we need to do some new open bids for demolition because, if I'm not mistaken, the last ones that was done, uh, Mr. Smith was giving the wrong properties. Um, so with the new bids, and Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, with the new bids, you just want to make sure that everyone's doing, bringing their bids in on time, and we do not accept any late payments, I mean, any late, um, bids. You have something you want to add, Sean? No?
Uh, um, this is, I, I'll talk to you about it one on one.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Um, as far as the lights, now I did speak to Mr. Rambo. Um, I also spoke to Sean and Steve about ordering our lights. Um, we don't have that yet, but Mr. Rambo, as soon as we get that, those lights, we would definitely, you know, he, um, posted. And what those lights would do, it would just be for any various, um, special events that we have, various holidays. He has a great idea on how he wants to set things up, just to beautify the town. Um, so I appreciate that, Mr. Rambo, Mr. Rambo. And then we have, I spoke with Carolyn from Triad, and, um, she is able to provide us grants or try to get us grants for our new, for our new police station. Also, uh, with Mr. Sean Smith, um, helping us out with our flooding issues. So we want to definitely stay on top of that, and hopefully, we can get more, um, this ball going. And finally, I just want to thank Mr. Raviak for the work he's done thus far at the Borough Hall. I appreciate you so much, and I know we will be calling on you again soon. And Mayor Council, that's all I have, unless somebody else has something else they want to add.
I was only going to ask you, as far as, what, what do you have in mind, or have, do you have a place in mind at all for the, uh, new police building that you're speaking of?
Thank you, Councilman, for asking that, yes, I do. Our old street, um, street department. Um, it's a great foundation, there is, um, you know, a lot of work that has to be done. And since you brought that up, I have an idea. And Council, you let me know what you guys think about this. Now, I think I brought this up to Mr. Sean Brown and Ms., uh, Councilwoman Irene Scarpese. The stuff that is in there, there's a lot that we can't just throw away. So my, my thought was, we have the closet on East Harmony Street, I believe that's our property as well. Um, how about to get this thing, this ball rolling? Can we just move that stuff from the fire hall to the closet temporarily until we're able to get in there and, and, um, dissect or get rid of things the proper way? What do you guys think about that?
Before you have that discussion, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, just, just so you know how it got to be like that, uh, Ms. Worley, when they were doing the repaving a couple months ago with the engineering firm, there was a shed in the parking lot that had to be, uh, removed or demolished. The shed was full, but it wasn't part of the contract to empty it. So it was hastily emptied into, uh, that one bay door at the Road Department, and by and large, most of it could be thrown out, and I could talk to you offline about that, on what could stay, what should go, et cetera, et cetera, without touching anything relating to the clerk's office or wreckage or retention.
Awesome, thank you, Rich, I appreciate that. And if nobody else have anything else, Councilman, did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did, thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you, guys, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next up is general government, that is Council President Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Um, the Governance Committee met on January twenty-seventh of this year for updates to our last meeting. The committee was in full attendance. Uh, we are currently waiting to hear feedback from the Public Safety Committee regarding the creation of the position of Public Safety Director. Um, also, a vendor has been identified in regards to developing um a community newsletter to be distributed to our residents. And lastly, BA Brown and the committee are currently working on the performance evaluation plan. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Martin. Next is housing. That's Councilman Rambo.
Evening, everybody. I do not have a report or having a um, we do have some applicants. I am going to fill you in with this. Yes, my applicants for the zoning officer position. Um, nothing real good. Um, like whoever applied just doesn't have uh the training that we need right off the bat. They're going to need some training, so still being reviewed. Um, the other thing is uh we we just have one applicant for um for the zoning office. Um. I do believe it might just be for a fence or something. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, um, Sean, did you want to um um comment on these applicants that we have for the zoning officer, or is that something for another time?
It is is personnel related. Um, so I'd rather not discuss it in a public session if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. Uh, also, we'll be having a uh hopefully a meeting within the next week. I do apologize to uh um Mrs. Scarpese and uh Ms. Martin. Uh, I am just so swamped with my daily business, um, and I hate winter with a passion, so I'm moving a little slower than normally do. So uh my apologies. I'll get with everything hopefully caught up here in another week.
Mr. Rambo, could you forward the applications to the committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving to recreation. Councilman Carter?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, recreation, I currently don't have a report. We are scheduled to meet. I'll be reaching out to uh uh Councilwoman Mincy and Councilman uh Rambo. We are meeting this Friday um at seven P M. Um, I only truthfully spoke to our committee from last year um in text, uh people that basically help out. Um, but I I will be sending out an email um most likely tomorrow for the Zoom that we will be having Fri- this Friday, um, which was scheduled after the last meeting that we had last month. Uh, we'll be having our first meeting this 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 coming Friday, where we'll just basically discuss up and coming plans for this year. Um, different ideas that's going on that we want to do, um, different holidays, um, or any any ideas that anybody on recreation has in general. Um, I didn't, I haven't received anything from Board of Health um from anybody, so as far as that, I I have that's that's all I have for my report to report. Unless anybody has any questions. You might be muted, Mayor. I seen your mouth moving, but I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I was muted. Thank you. Okay, moving to Public Works. Councilwoman Scarpese, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I have some good news. I was in contact with the county, and I talked to Mr. Ridgeway and Ms. Mitchell about cleaning our ditches. They have confirmed with me that it is their responsibility. And Ms. Mitchell told me that they are going to be out within the next week or so to assess what we need for Strong's Strong's Lane and Mill Street Ditches. At that point, she is going to let us know if we are covered under current D E P permits that they have, which would mean that we could have this done relatively quickly, within months, or whether we have to apply for other permits, which would actually push it off probably to the end of the year because it's just slow to get permits. So that's the good news that I have. Um, the bad news is that we're still having problems with our interlocal agreement with Carney's Point. Um, they have not given our residents a flyer that explains the trash removal and the recycling removal, the bulk pickups, et cetera. Um, and they've expressed to Mr. Brown that they are not going to, and they have rejected multiple work orders that he has submitted. We're at a disadvantage now because they do not have a B A to negotiate with us. So it was suggested by me that if we do these items that
Yeah, I'm stuck.
Excuse me?
So. Trying to.
Somebody's not me muted.
Um, Madam Clerk, can you? That's um, that's it. Can you mute? Listen, thank you.
Thank you. So it was suggested that if Mr. Tarver feels that these items are within the contract that we have with Carney's Point, that we actually do the work and withhold payment for what it costs us to do the work. Um, I'm going to leave that to the B A and Mr. Tarver to sort out which items um would fall under that category. But I feel that they're just doing what they want, and they're interpreting this agreement as they please. I don't know what else to do other than give them a monetary penalty for not performing up to contract. And I'd like to hear any suggestions if there are any.
I I'd like to I'd like to discuss it further, but off offline.
Okay, that sounds fine. Um. Mr. Brown has gotten us two estimates to do repairs to the Public Works Buildings and the Ambulance Hall and the Fire Department. They seem to be under the threshold. We need gutters. We have a problem with the parking lot as to how the water flows. It's still icing. And he has written up the specs for this. It will probably be under the threshold of seventeen-five, hopefully, and we'll be able to move forward on that. What has happened is the Buildings and Grounds Committee and the Public Works Committee have been doing their meetings one after the other, so we kind of have some overlapping items. Um, I'm going to ans- answer Ms. Worley's uh question about the fines. The fines for the fire marshal items that are in violation are five thousand dollars per violation per day. It's very expensive. We have to get those items cleaned up. Uh, we also had some discussion about retention.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
I need to, what's the deadline at to to have that uh rectified?
We're already past the deadline. I think we have
No, the deadline is the deadline is February. It's February twenty.
February twenty? Yeah, I didn't see the extension on those papers.
So we have He did say that we would need to apply for additional thirty days or addition an extension. We can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we and we need to do that because that's quite expensive.
The request has been granted, and the deadline is February twenty. This is right from the department itself.
Okay, could you send that to me when you get a minute?
Maybe.
Uh, um, I'm gonna have to ask somebody else to send it to you because my computer is not connected to the scanner, or I could just put a copy in your mailbox.
Okay, that's fine. Um, yeah, I think that's our top priority right now. Um, we still need to talk about the retention schedule and the disposal of records. We kind of veered off on to other topics, which were the borough and properties, which I think is going to be the topic of our next work session. Um, we had a question about uh the borough truck, which I believe Mr. Rambo probably um knows the answer to, that we can discuss offline. Um, an energy audit for the Borough Hall to replace the air conditioning and talk about the um generator and solar farm for electricity to the borough. That was a topic, too. Um, I think that is basically it. I think, Mr. Brown, you still owe me an analysis of the uh dumping fees for recycling and trash because I think that's one of the first items that we want to negotiate in the contract with Carney's Point when we're able to. And we need some hard numbers on that. Um, that's all for my report.
That's actually supposed to be sent to me. Um, so I I can be responsible for that. I asked them the information, so they're supposed to send that over to me.
I think we have the actual tonnage right now. I think that's at the Borough Hall. Okay, so um I believe that may be in um Steve's office when, so you can contact them and find out where it is. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese.
Before we do go any further, Mayor, um, I did just, I'm guessing it goes to her, Rambo. I see her uh committee is Public Works for Streets and Roads. Um, at the corner of my street on Broad and Griffith, somebody hit a sign and knocked it down. Uh, looks like they basically rode up on the curb, I'm guessing, due to the snow or whatever the case may be, but they did
Broad and Griffith.
North Broad, North Broad. Yep, right there, uh
And Griffith?
Where Mr. Recruit Building is and right there on that corner, they knocked the sign.
A stop sign? A stop sign?
No, it's uh it's a it's a sign. I don't even know what it is. It might be something about crossing the street, um, on the crosswalk. Um, and basically saying to watch for people if they're crossing, uh, but I just know they knocked it down. It's laying in my yard right now up against my tree.
Okay, we'll put in a work order for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, last public safety, Councilwoman Mincy.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
First of all, I want to say to Mr. Carter and everybody, that is um a county road. So the county should be fixing those signs so that we don't put a work order in for us. That goes to the county.
Uh, thanks. Thanks, Ms. Mincy.
Okay, um. Yeah, I got some things here, but my computer is acting up, so bear with me. Um, I talked to Red Cross, Andrea from Red Cross. And um Red Cross is opening back up. So now they have, um, if you need um a smoke detector, they can come out and give you one. I'm sorry, not give you one. They will put it in. They're not going to give it to you. Um, they're not allowed to leave it with you. They have to install it. So if you don't want them to come in, then they will not install it. Okay, um, I will send this to Mr. Brown so he can put it on our website. Um, because she said you can just go to their website. You have to sign up. And um someone will get back with you. And um it will come out and install it. Then in April, we're planning to have, um, we're going to canvass the town. We're going to find the places that we think we need to start with first. Go out and um at that time, we'll be looking for volunteers. They will train you to go out with their volunteers to help install these um smoke detectors in the houses, but that's not until April. They will uh have that.
Councilwoman Mincy, excuse me for one second. Madam Clerk, can you mute area code eight two zero? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Mincy.
Okay, the next thing is um Success Center on February twenty-second from two to six. They're having a vaccine clinic, COVID boosters, health screening, all that good stuff. They're having door prizes and everything. Um, but it's not there. Um. It's it's not at their center. It says event location at eighty-one Walnut Street at Shooting Stars. Um. What did you say, Mayor?
I said, oh, I said, okay, because I was trying to figure out where eighty-one was, but
Yeah, um, I thought it came from the Success Center because I get emails from them. And um then when I I read it, but then I seen it said um eighty-one Walnut Street. It says walk-ups or welcome. Um. Yeah, and they have the puppet show and all that stuff also, too. But I just wanted to tell them for those who still haven't got vaccinated or their their uh boosters in anything that on the twenty-second of uh February, they're having that.
Is there a flyer? Do you have a flyer?
Uh, yeah, I can send that to. I I I'll get it over there somehow. Um. And last but not least, let's see if I can find this. Uh, we had our meeting on the twenty-first. I gotta find it. Um. I was going to try to read the minutes, but I'm sorry. The computers shut down, then it wouldn't let me get back in here where I needed to get. So I don't know what's going on with that. Um. Okay, I can't find it. So let me read off what I already had. Um, this is the things that we talked about and some of the deadlines. Um, first of all, we had um Mr. Rivera there, um, Councilman Carter, Councilwoman uh Worley, and um EMS captain Debbie Ashcraft. So the things that were discussed was uh one of the things was the qualified purchasing agent. Um. I don't know if they brought that up in the governance meeting, but that is something we need so we can get stuff that we need. Um, we talked about the uh emergency lights from the um, they come from like the Fire Marshal's report that's needed. We talked about police staffing. Um, there were some other things that, excuse me, Mr. Rivera had brought up, um, some safety issues, but intersection safety, stop signs on different streets. He's going to get back with us on that, and then we will proceed with that. Um, he also brought up commercial trucks being parked on um Borough Streets. Um, there is a resolution ordinance. I think it just needs to be updated because the one I read, it it had a time limit. And I think is uh he can um tell us when he does his report. I think he doesn't want them there at all because they are kind of hard to see around. The big tractor trailers and all those things parked on the streets and the big box trucks. Um, we talked about quarterly stipends. Um, it was something like like Ms. Scarpese was saying, but um um the way Debbie Ashcraft explained it to us that they do in Petretown, I tell her we need to bring it up in the budget meeting um because I think it would be something better that we need. Uh, we talked about EZ Pass. The ambulance does not have EZ Pass. Um. They don't have EZ Pass, and neither does Mr. Rivera. What's disturbing is um Ms. Ashcraft told us when she goes through EZ Pass, they send her a ticket, and then she calls back and they help her with it because they know her. Well, I don't know if this is the right words. That's just plain ghetto. We can get EZ Pass. It don't cost that much. So we'd like to have EZ Pass, and we'd like to have that no later than March first. I'm sure if you go up there tomorrow, they'll probably give it to you because they'll take your money. Um, but yeah, EZ Pass is needed. Um. One of the other things that we didn't talk about in the meeting, um, but I talked to Chief Adam because he couldn't attend. I I sent this to um Mr. Brown already. He wanted to know the the status of the um air packs um from the USDA grant. And uh I think he had talked to Triad about getting ten sets of turnout gear. Turnout gear for everybody that don't know is the gear that the guys wear from the Fire Department that we need. You can't have guys out there without gear on. Um, one other thing was I talked to the ladies in the court. And, um, when I was up there the other day, their, um, fax machine had broke. Um, which I told Mr. Brown, if I'm right, they're, they have to have their separate stuff because their stuff can't be out there in the hallway. Uh, for people to be reading stuff that comes through. And also they asked for a new laptop because they're having trouble with, uh, the one they have, uh, Green Tech had told them. Um, I don't know, something about the VPN and all the stuff that's on there. They needed something different. Um, to have court with it. So we sent that over to Mr. Brown. Um, the only thing we asked is that we could have the, uh, the ordinance done by March first and the EZ Pass. And, um, the Borough Hall emergency lights. I don't know if that's, I think that's on the, um. The report from the fire marshal, I'm not sure. So if it is, that'd probably be something that needs to be done also. And, um. We also have some refund checks, checks that need to be given out. Don't know where they're at. But we would like to know where they're at, um, and what the holdup is. And, um, that's all we discussed. And I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mincy.
The only thing I will add as far as the EZ Pass thing goes, the only thing you will need is a, a credit card they're going to want to put on file, whatever the case may be. I'm not sure how to go about that or where we're going to go about with that. Um, I don't know if the Borough has a Borough credit card over the, maybe, but if so, that's all they're going to ask for. Once you go over there to sign up. So if whoever goes or whenever whoever goes, just make sure you have that also.
Well, maybe with, um, municipal, yeah, with government, maybe they do it a little different. I don't know. But, um, it's, it's gotta be somewhere.
Put in a phone call.
How?
And we can probably, Mr. Brown could probably put in a phone call and just, just check and see.
Yeah, because there's, uh, there's something that, um, there's something that's needed. They should, and you know, um, I don't even know if she's on tonight, but, um, in her report, she has been saying they've been on divert. They've been going to a lot of different hospitals and across the bridge a lot. So that, that the EZ Pass, then, um, for Mr. Rivera, um, he goes to different meetings, whether he's going over Delaware or up the turnpike or wherever. Um, he still has to pay these tolls and that, that shouldn't have to come out their pockets. EZ Pass, although it's getting higher, it's, uh, something I'm sure it's, it's cheaper than the fines that they would give us if they, if they gave them to us.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Mincy.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving into departmental reports, we have the business administrator report. Mr. Brown, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I just, uh, before I get into, um, the specifics, I just wanted to just adjust a few things. Um. And I think I can summarize it by saying this, just to remind everybody, we are in, we're, uh, we're short, we are short staffed right now. And in being short staffed and dealing with people that had COVID and people who had, um, they're out on bereavement. It's, what I, what I would ask is for you to fully understand how much that impacts the daily operations of the Borough. Uh, come by, come by to the office and spend fifteen minutes with me and you'll see. And what you'll see is that you sit in a chair and you'll hear my desk phone ring and then you'll hear my work phone ring. And then I'll get a message on Teams, uh, and then somebody's knocking on the door. It's, this is every hour I work until five o'clock, it's like this every day. And anyone that's been in my office, um, I'm sure can attest to, to have seen that. So with that said, this is not excuses for anything to, to excuse us, to explain is not to excuse, but the core thing that I have to do as a good business administrator to address this is to make sure that we are building capacity in the Borough. That means we're filling positions. So Sharon Williams, me, Steve, whoever, we don't have to, right now, uh, the clerk's office, because they're on the first floor, they're dealing with issues that have nothing to do with the clerk's office because folks want somebody to talk to and they don't have necessarily anyone else to talk to. Um, so we have to focus on building capacity. That includes an assistant for the business administrator, which that position is already, is already being created and approved by council. Thank you. Um, but it also includes filling the other vacancies that we have. Um, as Mr. Rambo indicated earlier, we want to try to find the most talented people possible for those positions because we don't necessarily have thirty days to give a person a learning curve to learn the, the basic fundamentals of the job. Um, yet we are going to have to make some, some hiring decisions soon, uh, just to be able to move things, be able to move things forward. Um. And I'll leave, I'll leave, I'll leave, I'll leave that part, um, at that. On, um, some of the, um. Some of the other things that were, that were discussed in some of the reports, I will talk to the council members about, um, specifically. Um, but just know that what I think happens is sometimes is that certain people don't, they don't see things moving as quickly as they think they should move because they aren't aware of the multiple constraints that exist. Now, in other these cases, I'm actually surprised to hear some of these things being discussed because people know exactly what the status, uh, of it is. Um, with that said, um, I'll get into, I'll get into, um, my report because this is a really big issue for the Borough. Um, that would be good for everyone to, to, to hear and have an update on. I, I can't speak to what happened in Penn's Grove, um, in the, in what's known as the Alts, where the two thousands. Um, but in, in the world of redevelopment, there are a few ways that you can go about taking a property that's owned by the Borough and get it in the hands of a homeowner, uh, whether that be a landlord or a person who's, who's per, or purchased the home. There are a few different paths to do that. And some are more open and more fair than others. What we are looking into in Penn's Grove is to use a few different strategies. Um, the first is the auction, and let me just speak on that for a second. There are a first, um, for all council members, the auction list has been shared with you. It's been put in your, in your mailbox. It was also emailed to you. Know that the version that you have in your mailbox or that you have in your email is not the last version because this is something that we are continuing to adjust. Um, certainly nothing will be added to the list, but there are a few properties that will be taken off, off the list. Uh, Mr. Tarver, Mr. Tarver and I are working to address some of the concerns that have been shared. Um, in this, not to bore anybody, but, um, because it's, it's boring, but it's important. This includes addressing issues with non-conforming lots that are next to occupied properties. This also includes, uh, making sure that we have, um, that for the properties that specific government agencies have spoken or interest in, that we, um, that we take those off the list to, to make the possible, uh, transaction. And with that said, we, we anticipate no delay and with schedule now, we're auctioning to be March first, second, March first, second and third. Um, the list will be, the list there for the properties that will be on auction will be available online, uh, probably by next week. And Maxspan, the company that is monitoring the auction, will also be able to walk people through exactly how to participate on a step-by-step, step basis. Um, I will say that the point of entry is if, if you want to buy four separate, if you're interested in putting in a bid in and four separate properties, you have to put money down initially before even being able to move to the next step. Um, that's going to probably be a minimum of a thousand dollars. Um, they'll put a hole in your credit card or you submit a, a check. And then if you don't, if, if you don't win the bid, then that, you get that money returned to you immediately. Um, the auction property list is, is, is pretty good and includes, um, some houses that are, that are in good condition. And it includes, um, lots that are, that are built, that are bu, buildable lots. And, uh, based off the feedback that we got in the, I think that was the Public Works Committee, um, we're, we, we're taking those issues and those issues, uh, serious and are working with that. Um, I'm going to give everybody, um, all the council members and Mayor, I'll give you a really thorough update on what's going on with this by Thursday. Um, after we work out some issues and, um, talk to Maxspan and I'll also send you an updated list for the auction. Specifically for, uh, for Virginia Avenue, um, and I've talked about this before, but it bears repeating. Um, those properties aren't, aren't appropriate for an auction. Instead, there's a different process those properties will go through. Um, and that, that process starts with something in New Jersey known as designating an area in need of development. This is something that has happened in Penn's Grove, uh, previously. Um, we're going to work to see what areas have already been identified as being in need of development. Um, and see if those, if they, if they've expired, if tho, if those designations have expired or not. And again, um, this is, this is really important. So I, so you can, all council can expect, uh, regular updates on this so that you're, you're up to date on what's going on. We also, um, we've had a few meetings on foreclosures. The Borough has not foreclosed on any properties in twenty twenty-one. We now have a list of the, of, um, people who haven't paid their taxes in three quarters or more. And, um, and, and, and who, and who the Borough have already, who, who the Borough has already placed a lien on the properties. So, um, later this month or in March, you will get recommendations that will be discussed first in committee about what properties we would like to move forward on foreclosure. To be clear to everybody, we are not, the Borough is obviously not in the business of owning properties. But we also can't let people get away with this not paying their taxes, um, absolutely at all, and then also not maintaining those properties. So we have to find a balance between those things. And, um, this is a, this is a group decision and, and most of which is just coming from recommendations from me based on the advice that we've received from, um, our redevelopment attorney and our foreclosure attorney and our tax, uh, uh, collector and tax assistant. We will also, um, we will also probably in the next few weeks, because we have to wrap this issue up with the, with the, um, audit issue, we'll also be recommending certain properties for ejectment. Ejectment is the process similar to, similar to, um, eviction. Where we will, we have, the Borough owns at least two properties that families live in. Um. What probably happened in those families lived in the properties when it was foreclosed upon, and then the Borough never asked them to vacate those properties, so they still live in the properties. They're living in those properties tax-free, mortgage-free, rent-free. Um, and, and both properties, they are paying utilities, uh, but their, their rent-free status will, will, will have to end at some point. And that will be in this calendar year of twenty twenty-two. And then the last thing that I want to mention is, um, uh, hopefully everyone has had a chance to read through the, the reexamination of the master plan. Um, the ma, the, the, even the nineteen eighty, the nineteen eighty version and the reexamination confirmed the same thing, which is that our zoning map is outdated. This is, this is important for the growth of Penn's Grove because if you go by current zoning rules, businesses are not, businesses aren't able to open without going through several hurdles that are both expensive because of the cost for engineers, for plan review, for, for going before the planning slash zoning board. Um, there are businesses on Broad Street that require a business to open to provide six, seven, eight parking spaces in, in additional to what's already there on the street. It doesn't make any sense. No one agrees with this. So, um, I think I would, I would ask council and the mayor to expect in the spring for us to pass some recommendations on what we could do to, um, to update that. Uh, we've talked to our engineer, Mr. Smith, and again, our attorneys. Um, and we've also, um, been in conversation with some consultants. We've also studied what other cities are doing across New Jersey and America to address this. Um, but updating our zoning will, updating our zoning will, um, is actually connected to good economic development. So speaking of good economic development, the last thing that I want to say is related to cannabis and the cannabis industry. Um, I know a few people on this call today. Um, the Borough, uh, well, I, um, was, was hoping to have, uh, the businesses on the agenda for today. But after going through the applications that were submitted, um, there were some, there were some, I don't want to use the word concerns, but there were some issues that need to be worked out. Governor Murphy announced on Friday that, um, the CRC, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission is not going to commit to its original promise to, uh, review applications and get a response within fifteen days of submission. So what we will do is continue to work out the issues with the companies that are interested in coming to Penn's Grove before they get there, before, uh, presenting them to the full council for a letter of support. And if anyone's curious on what those issues are, they're mostly related to a combination of psych control. What building is it? Who owns it? How likely are they to truly be able to occupy that building? Um, and, and the type of business, the, the type of business that they're going to have and community support. There were a few locations, there are two locations in particular that companies want that are, um, they're, they're in the correct zone, they're, there's, they are appropriate in, from a zoning perspective, but they count, but, um, uh, what people have asked for is for those companies to get support from their neighbors, uh, to, um, ensure that the neighbors are aware of their interest. Um, and they, um, I, I forwarded that information and it is being worked on right now. So the next council meeting is the fifteenth, is that correct, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
In, in the fifteenth, is that, I was confused, um, but is that a council, is that a regular meeting or a work session?
It's a work session with some items that will be presented to council.
Okay.
For our restoration.
On the meeting of the fifteenth, if, if I may, I would like, there are a few things that, um, I think, um, that would, that we can ask council to vote on. One is the, uh, an updated bills list. Two is, um, the properties for the auction. Um, and three is, uh, the discussion and, and, and possible vote on the letters of support that the cannabis companies need before they can submit. And just to be really clear, when some of these, uh, on, on, for cultivation and manufacturing specifically, the state is going to stop accepting applications after a certain date. So this is time sensitive. But we want to go, we'd rather be right than fast. I'm kind of paraphrasing what Governor Murphy just said. So in that, um, we will be working on this aggressively between now and the fifteenth to share the, to, uh, to share the concerns. And, uh, what I can do for, um, everybody, uh, before that is put a copy of the, um, applications in your mailbox so that you can see, um, exactly who they are and what they're trying to bring to Penn's Grove. Oh, um, Ms., Ms. Mitzi, I could talk to you about this offline, but you mentioned refund checks. Um, I thought, I, I was just told last week that everybody, that all the checks have been distributed. So, um, if anybody, um, if anybody thinks they're owed a refund check, please, please let me know. Don't have to tell me now at the meeting, but just let me know so that I can look into it. Um, again, we, uh, the, the office has had a few people out for a few days, um, so we're playing catch-up.
Okay, our meeting was on the twenty-first, so I don't know if they got it since then or not. But I, I will find out.
Thank you. Okay.
I, I had a question. Oh, that me again. Um, you talk about this letter for, um, the cannabis people.
I'm looking at my window and it smells like something burning outside.
Look out that window, building maybe on fire.
Loose dog that they chasing. Your boy trying to catch him rich.
Um, the letter for the cannabis people. Okay, you want us to vote on this on the fifteenth. The day's the first. When are we going to get this by?
Well, I, I, for one thing, I'm, I'm continuing to get it, we're, I'm continuing to get, uh, let me, let me back up and say how it gets to me. So on the Borough website, there's a, there's a page devoted to cannabis. And on that page is a, is an application where a company can request a letter of support. When that company submits that application, it comes to my email. I met, and I'll, and I'll give you an example of this just happened today. I read the, I read through the entire application and if I see any red flags, which I, which I've seen, then I tell the applicant. And I, I, I told the applicant today that there were some concerns in the application. It wasn't anything major, but it was major enough that before it's, it goes to the next level, which is the council, um, that company has to address, has to address those things. Um, in the, in that case, they, they, in that case, they, they, the company put, uh, uh, four different types of licenses on the same application. So I asked, I asked him to, um, submit one at a time for each specific license because require a separate letter of support anyway. From that, um, I can, for the ones that have, that like, that, that have passed muster with, in, in my office based off of the feedback that we receive. Based off of the feedback that we receive for criteria, uh, they, I can, like I said, I can just print them out and put them in your mailbox and continue to do so as they, as they come in. Um, only advice to council, we aren't, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not supposed to give this, like, a super high level of scrutiny. That's more so for the CRC to see. So that means if I'm kicking it back to the applicant, that, that, that's a real fundamental issue. Governor Mur- uh, uh, Jim Brown just said, uh, a couple of days ago, he's the executive director of the CRC. He said they haven't, they've had issues with every application they've received so far. They haven't gotten one application that was in good condition. And maybe that's because this is a new industry. So with me being a former grant writer, I'm really good at looking at applications. It's something, it's a, it's a comfort zone of mine. Um. I, I hear the feedback that I've, that I've heard from the seven elected officials, um, over, over this, over the last several months. So what you, when you get it, it's something that we believe will check every box of what boxes should be checked metaphorically. And then you can, um, ask your questions and make your decisions from there.
What, what I'm saying, Mr. Brown, is, I'm, I'm going to speak for me.
Okay.
I got four meetings this week. I just found out one tonight when we were on here, that I got one Friday night. Then the next week, hopefully there's nothing going on. But if we're only given two weeks, we're not even two weeks to look at these things. This, this is where we have a problem at. We, they gotta give us enough time to look at these things, because all of us work. When you get home from work and you know for yourself, when you get homework, you don't look at nothing else.
I don't.
Yeah, so we need enough time to be able to look at it. So right now, we're on a countdown. We don't even have fourteen days.
Okay, I will say that I, I did a word limit on the applications. Um, so if, I would say for one application, it would probably take you about ten minutes to read if that. And ultimately, you're going to end up with probably about twelve applications, um, that, uh, for, for, for your, for review.
Still like to have them in my hand.
In recreation's defense, I did make an announcement. We were meeting last meeting.
You said next month. You didn't say when.
Uh, we, it's recorded. I'm sure it's on there. I said the first Friday of February.
I have to agree with Ms. Mincy. I mean, the agenda was laid again. The bill list was laid again. We gotta do better.
Okay, so, so on the bills list, I sent an email explaining what the limits were.
I, I don't need an explanation. I just, I'm just saying we have to do better.
We need, we, we need to do better in, by building it, by building capacity. That's not the same as a performance issue. It's, it's, it's not the same thing. And I'm going to defend the, the finance office because I know how hard they work every day. But when you, when you look at our, the technology that you, the software that you use, um, internal, internal issues, external pressures. Um, the frequency, the frequency of meetings. The, um, even though we're a small borough with a five thousand people. There is a certain amount of staff that's just required to just run the daily operations of this, of the, of this, of this, of this borough. So, um, we always, I know, in terms, can, can performance be better? Probably, but I think, but I think the performance will get better as our, as our capacity increases. Um, and, um, yeah, I just leave it at that.
Not criticizing the finance office, I'm just saying we have to do better. We've been doing, this town has been in existence for like four hundred years. We have to do better.
So let me comment on that. Um, I, I agree with that. But what I will say is that we've made a lot of progress in the past, what, two and a half years? So it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but everybody does recognize where our shortcomings are. And everybody's banding together to, to be a part of the solution. So again, I'll say that, um, I know we're all working as hard as we can. And it will get better, because it has to get better. We don't have a choice. So, and, and I think for the most part, everybody wants to, to, to make, uh, uh, positive changes and move forward and make things better. So I think we'll get there. And I think, I think after our, as I mentioned earlier, um, before we voted on the resolutions. I said that, um, as we have our next, our work session in two weeks. I think, um, it'll get better from there. So. I, I hear everyone. Is that, uh, it, Mr. Brown? Okay. All right, thank you. Moving to the finance officer report, is Mr. Lab on? No? Okay. Do, does, does anybody have his report? Is Eric on or?
Yes, I, I have, I have it.
You have it? Okay, go ahead.
Um, so this is, it's a really good transition to what I just discussed. In the last few weeks, so in the beginning of it, let me say in the beginning of the calendar year, there's a lot of, um. There's a lot of closing up stuff from the, the previous calendar year. So, um, Ms. Scarpese earlier asked for monthly updates on the budget. Um, when I read, like, when I ran my business, I use accounting software. I updated it when some stuff was automated. But I could in any given time tell you exactly how much money I had in each category and how my money was spent. In government, it's a little bit different, because there's so many rules that have to go by and there's so many, um. Reports that have to be created that it, it change, it changes the process of. But with that said, um, in Mr. Lab's report. Um, the annual debt statement has been, has been filed and that's a, that's a, a document that just shows, uh, what debt we have. Um, from bonds or other forms of debt and how it's been paid. The fourth quarter federal tax return nine forty-one has been filed. The fourth quarter New Jersey nine two seven W and WR dash thirty report has been filed. And that, that's related to, um, our pensions. The W three transmittal of wage and tax statement for two thousand and twenty-one has been filed. Um, there is a lot of information that the auditor requested that the finance office had to, um, that, you know, they had to dig through and, and get. Those, those, uh, that information has been transferred over to the auditor. Uh, somebody, oh, Ms. 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 Mitzi earlier asked about the air packs and things from the USDA grant. Uh, we, bu- believe it or not, you kind of voted on it tonight in a way, because we had to pass the temporary budget resolution. Uh, basically that resolution accepted those funds and, and formally put them in our budget. Uh, so we are now, later this week and beginning of this week, uh, next week, we'll be ready to actually order those things. Um, and then the end of the report, um. There is a, in tax question, there is a one point three percent increase, which is based on six months of, uh, preliminary billing. Um, and the other thing I want to mention on increase is that we, we often have talked about. The increase of, um, our, our collection rate increased in, in two thousand and twenty-one compared to two thousand and twenty, which is great. That's the good news. There's also bad news, unfortunately. And the bad news is even though we collected a higher percentage of taxes. We collected less in taxes because we had less ratables. Ratables are anything that you can collect, a municipality can collect taxes on as a ratable, whether that be a business, um, or, or, or a house, residential or a lot for that matter. Um, we are, so I want every, every department, um, whether you're on staff or you're a council member, every department. Uh, you will definitely get an update on your, on your, uh, on your budget. You're probably going to be able to get that by the middle of next week, now that these other items that we just discussed. Um, have been addressed, which are all compliance-related issues that, and reports that were required to, to fill.
Is that it, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to the police director report. Mr. Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and hello to everyone in council. Just to touch upon, uh, something Councilwoman Mincy said regarding our, uh, committee meeting last week. One of the priorities that we had, uh, relates to recruitment. And we're trying to find qualified local candidates. So I'm just going to give you a few quick numbers on where we are. We are on currently three internet platforms. We have the ability to track the number of people that are reaching out to us. We've had a hundred and eighty-one people visit, uh, the one platform. Demonstrating interest in the position of a full-time police officer. Seventy-four have submitted their credentials to us. Zero were qualified regarding having current police training commission certificate. The certificate is important, because it demonstrates that somebody's already gone to the academy, may or may not have. Um, experience in another police department. But it enables us to go through the background check and hire them and, and get them on the street in an efficient manner. Whereas what we did, uh, last year was open it up to other qualified candidates that didn't have a certificate. And we sent someone for the first time in a very long time to the police academy. And that individual washed out in the first week. So that everyone on the call understands what that means as a setback for the police department, where you're looking at is, is a, is approximately one year. It's five and a half months of the police academy, where we'd have to pay the full-time salary of the individual. Then it's getting them back here, putting them through agency training, then putting them through a field training program. So that they could work, um, patrol. So that's why we're looking at people that already have experience and certificates. What we're exploring now is an alternative to that, which is called just that. An alternate route where we can get qualified people in town, uh, that don't have a certificate. Put them on standby for the next round of hiring, where we are at no risk, no obligation. To put them through the academy. They go on their own. Um, there's also part-time classes that they could take in the academy that allows them to have, um, employment during the day and go at night. So that's one of the things we're currently exploring right now regarding recruitment. Uh, Ms. Mincy covered everything else that was, was discussed in that meeting, but I wanted to touch upon recruitment. Regarding Mr. Brown's, um, report relating to the cannabis industry. I, I know one of the issues was going door-to-door and having, uh, the applicants do that, which, which is a great idea. So that folks, particularly if they're not from town, go and meet their neighbors where they're looking to open up their establishments. Well, I've had discussions with individuals in the cannabis, uh, sector. And one of the things that we're concerned about at the police department is just that, someone going door-to-door, knocking on people's door. And they don't know, um, what, what they're going to in regards to that. So we're, we're still in discussions with, with, um, the different companies and we'll help that process along from a public safety standpoint as best we can. Uh, but the other thing is we also don't want, uh, people walking, um, door-to-door on, on doorsteps. Uh, walking up paths and sidewalks that might be ice-covered, um, when, when temperatures freeze and, and risk injury. So maybe that's something that could be done later in the process. But I'm, I'm working closely with Mr. Brown on that issue, because one of the other things is. When he, when he spoke to, uh, red flags, if you will, regarding, um. The applications, some of the things really aren't that serious. And, and what it might be is, is a typographical error. Where somebody puts the wrong, uh, company name. So we're helping along with that process as well, when we're looking at backgrounds for, um, the companies and things like that. So moving along to my other, my report regarding the police department and, uh, our statistics. We ran two reports, because today is the first of the month. Where we have, uh, one full month completed, which is January. We did the annual report for last year, so that everyone would understand what the numbers are. And then we also ran a comparison of this January to last January. So there's probably over seventy-five different categories. And if anybody has questions, feel free to ask me, whether it's during the meeting or offline, I could fill you in on some of the numbers real quickly. And touching upon, uh, Debbie Askcraft's department, the, there were nine, I'm sorry. Seven hundred and ninety-six calls for service for last year for the ambulance. In alphabetical order, some of the other co- other categories that people are concerned about. Simple assaults. There were twenty-nine simple assaults last year. There were twenty-two burglaries last year. There were one hundred instances of domestic violence. That number is alarming and continues to be when I give you the month-to-month, uh, comparison statistic. There were seventy-eight crashes last year that we had to do reports on. There were four robberies. Sixty-nine shoplifting instances and a hundred and two thefts. Another, um, category that stands out in people's minds, because I know I get the most calls on it and it is the most concerning for me, are shots fired. And reason being not just because of the inherent danger of it, but because every, there's a lot of people that have rings on their, uh, for their doorbell. And the ring will alert you to shots fired. That doesn't necessarily mean that shots were actually fired. It picks up the sound and it could be something as simple as fireworks or firecrackers. So, so the, the, um, fifty doesn't necessarily mean shots fired. And we haven't had any, knock on wood, in over four months now. So for our January to the January comparison for two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. It's risen four calls this month compared to last year's for the ambulance. Simple assaults are down three hundred percent this past month, January, compared to last year. Burglaries are down fifty percent. Domestic violence are up thirty. Again, it's something that we need to be conscious of and we need to get in touch with other services to help us out. And Council President, um, Martin has been helpful with that, as well as Councilwoman Mincy. Motor vehicle crashes have remained the same. Shoplifting is down two hundred percent and thefts are down thirty percent. That's all I have for this report, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rivera, if we send an officer to, uh, class. Do we require them to, uh, be with the police department for a certain amount of time? Or reimburse us if they're not?
Are you referring to if we engage someone and with an offer of employment and then send them to the academy? Are they obligated to us for a certain amount of time, like contractually?
Exactly.
No, we, currently we don't have that and that's something that we discussed.
Do you know what the mechanism would be for putting that into place?
That would go through the solicitor. He would have to craft a contract. And, and rather than having those potential, um. Obligations, one of the things that we're looking at is this streamlined approach where people actually pay their own way. And then, uh, we have the potential for hiring them once they graduate. Because the other thing that you know, um, Mrs. Scarpese, is, is the budget part of it. So sending someone to the academy, you're, you're talking close to forty thousand dollars, uh, versus zero. If, if we're supporting them through the alternate route program. And we have the budget for that, you know, in advance.
I understand. I think it just might be a good thing to have as a backup plan.
Okay.
I, just if you needed to use it in some way. But I agree, your, your way is much more cost-efficient.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rivera. Moving to the fire chief report, is Chief Adam on or does someone have his report? Um, Councilwoman Mincy, do you have his report? No? Okay.
No, I don't have it.
Okay. Um, okay, moving to the ambulance EMS captain report, is Debbie on?
Don't have that one either.
Okay, no problem.
That would be seventy-eight calls for January. For the ambulance.
Thank you. Okay, moving to attorney report. Mr. Tarver, do you have anything?
No, Mayor, I'll have a larger report, uh, during the work session.
Okay, thank you. Moving to mayoral comments, um. First, today's the first day of Black History Month. So I look forward to, um, doing a few videos for the school, for the students. They always invite me to participate in that. Um, and also, um, I want to thank the governing body for your condolences. My husband's grandmother passed away and we were very close to her. She was ninety-one years old. So we really appreciate your condolences and we appreciate the beautiful plant that you all sent to us. So thank you very much for that. Um, also, I'd like to announce that, um, the building is back open. I wanted to make sure that the public knew that. Um also, I'd like to announce that um the building is back open. I wanted to make sure that the public knew that. And uh future council meetings will be in person. So the next meeting, February fifteenth, will be at the borough. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you. We don't have any old business, no new business.
Actually, I wanted to ask Mister Tarver if we could finish up that uh contract with Habitat. And get him that property that we have the resolution on.
Yes, Mister Tarver, um we're gonna put that resolution on for the next meeting, right?
Yeah, we can discuss that offline if you'd like. I have some some uh. Information to share. Uh so I I can give you a call, um Councilwoman Scarpacy on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um Mayor?
Yes.
I'm on my phone and I don't see how to raise my hand, but I have one thing um. I guess it's to me, it's new business. Um last night I went to the meeting at the college. For the um. They they talked about, they did this study on combining the schools.
Feasibility study?
Yes, and uh they also had it again tonight too. Um very interesting. Um I don't know where you can look at it online um. Or read it because they were talking about read it, so I gotta find it out to all of you. Well, anybody in Pensboro, whether you're a homeowner or not, um you need to check into it. It did talk about um some savings. Um that would come to the burrows and in different ways and thing is very interesting. Of course, everything has its pros and cons, but they were saying that if. Somebody asked when could they vote on it and they said it's four times a year that the school can vote and. I know one of them was later this year. Don't know if they will or not, but we don't want to be left in the dark not knowing what's going on. Uh I was told there was a lot of people on the meeting. Um I went to the college, but there was a lot of people online looking at it. But I still think we need to be aware of what's going on. So when it does come up, it won't be a surprise to anybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, moving to public portion. Please, if anyone from the public wants to speak, you have to state your name and your address and try to keep it to three minutes. Anyone from the public looking for raised hands? Mister Giordano. Go ahead, Mister Giordano.
Let me unmute. I have I have just a couple of issues that I would like to address. I'll try to be brief. The first is about Mary Kay. Uh Mary Kay, just so everyone knows a little bit about more about her, she does have. Two degrees, one in corporate accounting and the also in engineering. Now she's worked for a large corporation as a comptroller. Now, for those of you that don't know what a comptroller is. That is the chief financial officer next to the CEO of the corporation. That means he controls the financial operations of every facet within that corporation. All corporate decisions are passed through that comptroller. Now, Mary Kay became our chairman on a sewage board. And the cost at that time were accelerating each year and our rates were increasing. Uh she brought the cost under control and she started to reduce the cost of operations. In addition to that, she negotiated with Carney's Point Sewage because they're reconstructing. And she brought, so I understand, an additional eight hundred thousand dollars into the plan. Now, the rumor I hear is that Mary Kay is being taken off the board. And if that rumor is true, I would like to know what the reason is.
I'd be happy to answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, give me a second. Bring my screen back up. So one of the things, I just want to say that. I promise to do as mayor, and that is to expand the opportunities for people to serve our community. We have a number of people with various skill sets that they can offer, you know, that that they have to offer to make Pensgrove better. But if we never give them a chance or an opportunity, then we as a community lose out. Um, no one serving on a board or commission should take for granted that they'll be automatically reappointed. It's not a knock on anyone's performance. It's just, you know, as I said before, we're trying to give others a chance to serve. In addition, if I don't hear from people serving on boards that they're looking to be reappointed, I will assume otherwise. Now, what I don't understand is. There's been a lot of conversations, people calling each other, but no one's ever reached out to me. And if had Mary Kay reached out to me and expressed her desire to be reappointed again. I would I would have any issue with supporting that, but I I never heard from her. I never heard from anybody. So. That is the only reason why I I wasn't reappointing her. No one ever talked to me. It's almost like, you know, I I kind of feel disrespected a little bit because I feel like people are talking all around me like I don't exist. And regardless of who feels what they feel about me being the mayor or not, you still have to respect me while I'm in this position. I give everybody respect. I'm kind to everybody. I I hear anybody out. I don't let personal feelings get in the way if I don't like what someone does or how they move. It doesn't negate me from doing the right thing for our residents. I don't take personal feelings and make decisions when it comes to our residents. So if anybody, and I I'll say this to the public, if anybody wants to serve. And your term comes, it's it's coming to an end, reach out to me and express to me. That you'd like to serve again because people reach out to me all the time and express that they would like an opportunity, opportunity to serve. And to be quite honest with you, until I took office, a lot of people who are currently serving didn't even know that they that they could serve. A lot of people in the community weren't even aware that they were able to serve. They thought they had to have experience. And let's just be honest, all of us as elected officials at one point or another, we didn't have experience. When I when when I ran, I didn't have experience. When I supported each one of you who've been on council who are all currently on council, none of you had experience, maybe except two. Two other council members who've been on council before, but even when they first became uh council members, they didn't have experience. So I don't think that. You know, the decision should be made off of people having experience and things like that. I think the way I make decisions. Is if a person has a heart for the community and they and they and it's in their heart to serve. I don't I don't disagree. I think Mary Kay, from what I know of her, I think she's a smart woman. I think I think you're a smart man. I think a lot of people are smart, you know, so this has everything to do with. People communicating with me and and nothing more and nothing less. So I I hope I answered your question, Mister Giordano. Irene Scarpaxi.
Well, you've you've answered it, uh Mayor, and. I don't exactly agree with all of your comments, but I'm not here to debate you tonight. So uh just moving on, I just want to also make reference to uh Kenny James as well. And the reason I bring him up is because. You know, the planning board is very, very important to the people. It uh. The developers that come into the town, if they don't follow the master plan. Uh they could affect the citizens as far as the uh traffic in their area. The congested parking. Uh if the buildings are not suitable there, they could reduce the the value of their property. That makes it very important to have a chairman on the planning board who knows what he's doing. And is experienced. And I'm just gonna recommend. That Kenny James be put back on a planning board because. From what I see, there is no one else at this time. Who was as experienced as he is. And other than him. Armin was probably the best chairman we ever had, but he's deceased. So I just wanted to make that comment as well. And one other thing before I before I get off is um. Our business administrator made the comment that he needs an assistant. Now, I know for a fact, it's not hearsay. That the business administrator, business administrator in Carney's Point. Is, well, the township number one is probably twenty times as big as Pensgrove. And this business administrator not only does her job as a business administrator. She also wore the hat in housing part-time and in the construction office part-time. And never had an assistant. So I just feel as though before we spend money for an assistant, let's make sure that everything is being done efficiently. That's, it's just a, it's just my fair evaluation. And that's it. I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mister Giordano. And in in reference to the BA having an assistant, that was actually a recommendation by the state, by DCA. So that's why we move forward in in creating that position. That was a recommendation by them.
Also, also Mayor, may I may I add that we have gone on, yes. Uh to that with the VA, um it's it's not the VA's position. The position is an administrative. It's either administrative assistant or administrative clerk. So it is an assistant to the um. The boroughs, not necessarily the VA's assistant. I just wanted to make that clear because that was listed in our um. I think we approved it in the uh job description. It is not, it's not the VA's assistant. And 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 also to add, what makes Pensgrove so unique is that. We're playing catch-up. So other towns have been running the way um or close to the way it should. So I and it's pretty much, oh, I don't want to speak for anybody, the employees, but they're doing a lot of work to catch up. And it's kind of hard. So that assistant would be available to help in 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 any of those. Um you know, to assist any of those employees as well, you know, um so so just that you're just, I just want to um provide clarity for on that.
Well, thank you for that. That does clear it up.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I would have added myself to just to rub off what Shar said. It's hard to compare two people's jobs. Um, that's just like with any company. One company might be busier than the other company. So to say that someone doesn't need something because someone else didn't need it is kind of like a. A mute point, so to speak, because just for instance, I'm sure Corners Point wasn't thirty years behind on their master plan either. But Pensgrove is. So it's like it it or it's it's hard, it's hard to. Equate two things and say what someone else doesn't need and someone does need because they do something. We don't do something when what was on her plate might not be as ten times as what's on our BA's plate, but as you know. Council President said they that i- isn't just for the BA, it is more for everything else, but I do appreciate your input on everything you said.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Okay, next, uh Jeremiah.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Uh, my name is Jeremiah Carter. I live at fifty North Broad Street, Pensgrove. I have three questions. They have probably been answered somewhere along the line, but I didn't hear them. Uh, my first question is, what has been done physically? With our storm drainage system, you know, we you know how we, when it rains, it pours and the and the streets flood. Has anything been done physically other than planning and stuff like that, you know? Have we cleaned anything yet?
Uh who would like to answer that question? Would you like to answer that question, Mister Brown? Or or Mister Smith is on here too. I don't know which one of you would like to address um.
I I can answer. It's a simple answer. Um. Um Car- Carney's Point has a, I call it a sewer sucker and I'm sure it's not the proper term for it, but they have a machine. That's like a vacuum that they put on the sewer. And it's a it's a vacuum and it and it and it clean and it and it cleans the system out and they they use that periodically. And um I have. A, I used to get when when Casey was there as the business administrator, I got a report from when it was done. They're they're absent a business administrator right now. Um but um I can, you know, really, we could put stuff like this on our website too, just because it's, I mean, there's nothing. Secret about it, um just so people can see. But um there are, there are, there are definitely opportunities for advancement and. But that that's not one of them because they do do a good job of um cleaning cleaning them here regularly.
So so you said it's something that they put on top as so as as far as taking that the cover off of the. Drain, that they they don't take the cover, that they don't remove the cover and then go down inside and clean as far as they can go or something like that?
Uh so I haven't seen the process. I've only read the reports and and talked to um Carney's Point about about it. So I can't, I can't speak to the actual um mechanics of about words.
Yeah, because. Mister Carter.
Yeah.
Um, this is under my committee.
Okay.
And when I gave my report, we are. Having problems with our interlocal agreement with Carney's Point.
Okay.
I feel at this time that they are not living up to their obligations to us. Um, we are able to renegotiate this contract. We are also able to try and parse out. Some of the functions that they are responsible for. But if I were to grade their performance, trash pickup is good. All the other side items that they are responsible for would be categorized by me as poor.
Okay.
Um, I did contact the county on cleaning out the ditches. Which is not the storm drains, it's the ditches themselves. And it depends on whether or not we fall under their current permitting. We could have it done within the matter of months. If they have to apply for a permit for this, it would take much longer because we're dealing with the DEP. Probably not till the end of the year.
Right.
But that process is in motion now, which will help. They're gonna, you know, deepen the ditches and dig out the silt and things like that.
Right.
The storm drains, I don't believe that we're getting adequate um cleaning of our storm drains. I've looked at some of those reports. I I just, for the money that we're paying, I don't believe that we're getting our money's worth. We have are obligated to them till the end of this year. Um after that, we have to um renegotiate with them by June for twenty-twenty-three. Or, as I said, find other avenues to get this work done. So, it's not a good answer?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's the answer that I have at this point. We also have Mister Smith on the line, I believe. Who is looking for some grants for us to upgrade our pumping stations and our bulkheadings.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. You did excellent job.
Thank you.
I have one more question here. Uh I actually have two, but I know my time is up. But anyway, uh the other question is, I don't know if. Uh the township knows as far as council uh on a corner of South Broad and Walnut Streets. Everybody know where I'm at, South Broad and Walnut Street. Uh right there on the corner, there's a old garage that that's falling down. I'm sure everybody has seen that eyesore there. Everybody with me?
Yep.
Okay, so behind that, be be behind that building is turning to a dumping ground.
Yep.
A dumping ground. It is getting larger and larger every month. I'm gonna say that. I'm I'm being kind, I guess. So I don't know if township is aware of what's going on or who does it belong to. Has anybody been cited or? If anything can be done about that?
Yeah, Mister Brown has an update for you regarding that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh we are aware um code enforcement is um. I don't I don't know if the, I don't, I don't know how appropriate it is to talk about what specific citations are given on any general property. So I'll just say generally. We are aware this code enforcement is aware and we are taking every step that we can within the borough. Um to the point to where uh the the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection. Um sent um us the borough a notice in the last few days. That they um are willing to be partners with us in dealing with illegal dumping issues. Um I have, actually have a folder of eight, of eight dump, of of eight places people are dumping in Pensgrove right now. Uh so the one you're talking about is definitely one of the worst. Uh there's there's another situ- there's another situation, Lanning Avenue. Um and a few and a few other places that have that had this issue with um illegal dumping. Um, and a, and a few other places that have, that had this issue with, um, illegal dumping. This is an issue across urban cities across the state of New Jersey. Um, a question that we have to ask as a borough and that, um, I can, that I'll bring up to, either buildings and grounds or housing, whichever is the most appropriate, is how much money are we willing to put into this because it's definitely not in our contract with Carney's Point for them to deal with illegal dumping. That means we as a borough have, as, we as the borough have to take this on. And there's some, there are, it, it, it's, it's an expensive endeavor. And just if we clean up everything, it doesn't guarantee that, um, people aren't going to continue to do it. So one of the things we may be able to do from DEP is get cameras on, on, um, on dump sites so that you can actually see who's doing it and, and, and catch those that are doing it. In the past, a few people have asked, are we investigating who's dumping? Do you know exactly who it is? This isn't, this isn't, um, as you know, this isn't trash can trash. So we, we're not gonna find a, a, a Walgreens receipt and then be able to figure out what time that person shopped at Walgreens and then get a videotape and see the face and identify the person. As you said, it's furniture, it's big furniture, broke, big broken items, um, that are there. So we appreciate you bringing that to, um, our, our attention. And there are a few ideas that are floating around. Um, I think, I think maybe it was the Scarpacy suggested, and, and don't let me misquote you here, but, uh, getting a, um, getting a, getting a dumpster, the borough getting a dumpster, and then, you know, we collect those things and, and, and to just decrease some of our costs. So what I can, I, I can tell you by the next council meeting or, or caucus, we're gonna have, have more information on this because we'll know where our budget stands and we'll also have continued conversations with the state who can be a possible partner as we, as we literally clean up the borough.
Okay, that sounds like a doable, uh, idea there, you know, as far as a dumpster and some type of cameras, maybe after the fact. You know, you might be able to catch who's ever dumping, you know, those items in those different dump sites there. Uh, I have one more question, very simple. Okay, I know this is, this is a simple question for, uh, Councilman Worley. Uh, I know you said earlier that there's a location, that there's an idea for a new police station. I, I didn't quite catch that. Where is the location at?
At the fire hall.
At the fire hall?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, okay, I got it. Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman. Sorry. And that was gonna be my only recommendation. Also, Sean, I was gonna say if we could look into any type of like a solar camera or something that we might be able to put up at these, uh, dumping locations that could possibly send some type of feedback or to where we can monitor the camera uh, to see who's actually dumping it, but you spoke on that, so that's a, that's a good idea.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Rivera?
We, we can move on. I'm, I'm writing down the responses to some of the questions and I'll get in touch with people offline. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, uh, Councilwoman Mincy.
I was just gonna answer, Mr. Carter. Two things, uh, well, one thing. That machine does go into the grates. They move the grate and it goes in and sucks the stuff out. And they have done some, some back this way, back here where I live, back here by the river. We haven't got a report from them on the streets that they done. They, they should be sent us that. But we haven't got a, a report on that, but they have done some. They haven't done as many as they should. But they've done some, some of it, but it does go into, you gotta take the grate off and put the hose down there and, and suck it out. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and iPhone? Who has their hand raised?
I believe that's me, Mayor. Um, this is Rick, Rick Martin, forty-six Bruce Street. I know in the past, I don't know because with COVID or that's going on, but I do see the prison guys on the highway. Um, one time we were using a lot of the inmates from the Salem County Jail. They're gonna revitalize that actual program, but that may be a way to go to get some of the, um, illegal cleaning, um, illegal dumping. Um, cleaned up. I mean, it's fine and dandy to add cameras, but we all know what's gonna happen if you add cameras. What, what people do is they'll just start dumping in another area. You'll be chasing, putting cameras up, putting cameras up here and putting cameras up there. So that's just a thought as far as, um, maybe cleaning up some of this illegal dumping.
Okay, is any, any other comments or questions, Mr. Martin?
No. Oh, um, uh, Mr. Rivera said earlier about the, uh, about the issue of trying to hire police. I know it was a few meetings ago uh, that I made some suggestions to, I think, uh, uh, Solicitor, Arch Solicitor Tarver and, uh, actually, Mr. Rivera. Uh, I know it's very expensive to send guys away to the, uh, police academy, but I would suggest once again that, uh, we come up with some type of binding contract if we do go that way where they, um, would agree to maybe pay those fees back by agreeing to stay on for a certain amount of time and maybe a small deduction each payee to go back into, uh, the money that was spent on them or something like that. But I'm just glad to know that, uh, Mr. Rivera is moving forward. We're trying to come up with something because, uh, with our, with our police, police officers getting, um, a lot of overtime, I'm sure that's, you know, I know, I know they like the money, but still not a great way to operate. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, Ms. Fowler.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Brenda Fowler and I live, um, oh my goodness, go to one thirty-five Denny Ave. And all I want to say, everyone, and this may go up to Councilman, um, Mincy. Um, my job at Pratt, I look, I work at the Puerto Rican Action Committee of Southern New Jersey. Um, Mayor and everybody in Cal, we are having on February the ninth, all day a free COVID, um, health kits. First come, first served. Um, first come, first served. We give them out free. And on February the sixteenth, Wednesday, we're having a vaccination, uh, from three to six. All they have to do is bring their ID and wear their mask. And I will, Cal, be sending you some things out since you over to, um, Public Health. And I'll, the flyer will go up, Mayor, tomorrow. I left them at the office, so I will put something on the sites and have everybody so, and as I know more what we're doing, Cal, I'll send it to you and you can get it to everybody, the team.
Can you?
Thank you.
Ms. Fowler, can you email me the flyers for both of those events so we can?
I will tomorrow, Mayor. I left them at the office. I sure will.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some other hands raised, and now I don't see them anymore. Uh-oh, wait a minute. iPad.
Yes. John Scarpacy, uh, Railroad Avenue. I have a question. I guess it's for, um, Mr. Tarver and Mr. Brown. It's about the solar, uh, energy that we're, I'm referring to the Sewage Authority, and we've been trying to get solar, um, panels. We've been trying to get the solar energy for the town. And to get, in order to have this proceed, we need to get the property. Uh, and I believe Mr. Tarver and Mr. Brown are well aware of where it is. And from what I understand, Mr. Brown went and approached the, uh, the supervisor at the, uh, uh, Sewage Authority and told him that he would be willing to do it for a ninety-nine-year lease. I just want to remind everyone that they've been told more than once that that won't fly. They don't, you have to own the property. And, um, so with that being said, I, I, I can't understand why it has this be an issue uh, in order to pass it. Now, at the last meeting we had, uh, we had full attendance and Mr. Hill was